Good evening and welcome to the Shelburne Planning Commission meeting of July 13th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Consider a motion to approve.
So moved?
Seconded by Kate, seconded by Dick. All in favor? Aye. Our agenda's approved. Next agenda item is approval of the minutes of June 22nd, 2017. Consider a motion to approve.
One question I had was, we actually attack these things in a different order. Does that matter?
Put a little note at the top that says we're going to reflect the order of the published agenda.
Okay. That's fine. So let's, uh...
That's been the convention that's been used to ask.
Yeah, I think I might have put that in.
Cut.
Or maybe I didn't.
Do you want to move to approve?
Yeah, it does say that.
Kate, second? Second the motion to approve and then we'll open it up?
Yes.
For edits? Okay. Moved by Dick, seconded by Kate. Open for discussion on edits. So Andrew had inquired about just the chronology of things and then Mary Ann noted that we sort of tracked the published agenda which was amended, I believe. Any other comments? Edits? I had nothing. I did a great job as usual on accuracy. You comfortable with them, Kate?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of June 22nd are approved. Next item on our agenda is disclosures relating to any potential conflicts of interest with respect to any agenda items. Seeing no hands, hearing no voices, we'll move on to the next item which is open to the public. Opportunity for non-agenda related comment. Hi.
I can project my voice. I'm Ellen McShane, 743 Bay Road. I would like to thank you for making the information available as you agreed at the last meeting to a group of us that are interested and we received the email with your documents and the agenda about three days ago. And so we were able to give you a response to what changes you were proposing and just some additional thoughts that we had. Dean kindly came back to us and said, "We need to get that in like a week prior to the meeting."
Ideally, if you're going to submit written comments.
Right. And so the question is just how do we do that if we don't really know what your agenda is till about three days before? So, you know, so it's just really a processing issue.
Yeah, that's a fair question. I think what we can do is, we have a really good idea, sort of that we're going to be spending the bulk of our time on comprehensive plan. The question is, we're still sort of sketching out just chronology since there was some, as you'll see tonight, we're tackling Parks and Rec which doesn't fall into the current table of contents sequence. So I think what we could try to do is to the extent that we have alignment on what the next section of the town plan review-wise is going to be for the next meeting, then we can just certainly give you a heads up that, so we'll be talking about, for example, energy at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that would help.
That way you can at least get a sense of, okay, that's good. Let's get our comments to the extent you have them together.
Yeah, and then we would just be commenting on the current plan rather than on your suggested changes as long as you're okay with that.
That's fine.
Okay.
And then I, if you think it might be helpful, you can also, of course, look at the annotated version that we'll be receiving as part of our bi-weekly packet.
Oh, okay.
If that's helpful, if you want to see the comments that we'll be discussing as well as provide your own input.
Yeah, and that's what I think came in the email, if I'm correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that is an agenda item, but we'll just segue into it because I don't see anybody else unless...
Thank you.
Don has input open to the public?
I'll join you in the discussions.
Okay.
So I had included a note mentioning, because I had anticipated Todd here.
Right, on the signage.
On the signage related to the farmer's market. It could very well be that he'll just come back in two weeks or he might ask for it to be scheduled as an agenda item.
That's fine. I mean, I think this is a topic generally, right, that we'll take a deeper dive into at some point once we get through comprehensive plan work.
I would imagine, although I think his concern would be having the regulations changed so that it could be in effect next year.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think he's looking for it to be something he can do during this season and they end in, end of September.
Okay, so it's not time-sensitive?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, hopefully he comes in at the next meeting or a future meeting and we'll tackle it then. Okay. So moving on to our next agenda item is the comprehensive plan update which we started to jump into a little prematurely there, but it's okay. So tonight, we're trying to tackle a few big buckets, the first of which will be hopefully completion of the future land use section. That will include a detailed discussion of what we consider growth area two as well as the rural district. Then we'll jump into an update of the Parks and Rec section and then we'll sort of look ahead a bit on energy and future sections that we're likely to discuss in the next meeting at the end of July.
Do you have in front of you the content of the email that was sent?
We do. Thank you. Yes, we have your input to both the land use section and the Parks and Rec section, so thank you.
And I, I'm working on the Parks and Rec side, so I actually took what you did and added it to the doc already, so it's already in there. I did that this afternoon after I got it, so it was, I had made some tweaks that aligned sort of with what you did, but I just went with your guys' suggested wording, tweaked it a little bit, you'll see, so.
Okay, so why don't we continue the conversation on the land use section?
And one of the, and the thing that has mentioned in the memo been a little bit tricky is, is the document management. We have two people. There was a document that is included in the packet that was updated to include all of the discussion through the last meeting. And now Kate, and Kate, plus some early edits that Kate had suggested, and you have since made changes.
I left some time yesterday, so I worked on it again yesterday.
Right.
Which is on the Google Doc, yeah.
Yes, and I, and just because I was a little bit wary of any potential technical issues, I've converted the Google Doc to a PDF. I didn't print it out, but I can project it.
Okay.
And so it will look similar to what was in the package, but it'll have some additional edits. So furthermore, there was also some material from Dick that has not been folded in.
Okay, so I printed that and I thought what we'd do is just try to combine it all. You know, I can, Dick's comments aren't that extensive and you can really weigh in on...
Get the last, the one that came today.
Yeah, we've had some issues because he'd made some changes and they didn't stick and then there's a new one, but I have a digital version of that one as well from Dick. So if we can maybe work from Kate's, because I think that's the most extensive and then Dick...
And then layer in Dick's input, page by page.
Yeah, I think that would work best.
Okay.
Question for Kate, did you, I haven't seen those changes.
I haven't seen those either yet.
Were you able to add something about the stormwater management that Susan Morgenberg had requested be added last meeting?
In the, in the, the future land use thing?
Yeah.
No, I didn't see that.
Yeah, I had made a note on that too. So that would be at the end, just jumping back to...
There was something that you did...
I did try to sort of integrate all of that as I went along, but not, but probably not as, as, in as much detail as Susan would like, I just, then missed that. So maybe we can...
Did you make, did you update growth area one with new?
I did, I did, I did all the, oh, not, I didn't add the growth area one stuff. I didn't do that.
So you started at growth area two?
I worked on growth area two, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so was that, Andrew, was that for growth area one or, I thought it was kind of for both, right?
She asked me specifically to kind of follow up. She looked and didn't see it.
Yeah, we, I think there was a bit of, you had to leave and then we agreed you would do it, but maybe after you had left, so I just wanted to make sure it hadn't been, hadn't been missed.
Oh, right, I did leave, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
So, why don't we do this?
And I told her it wasn't, it's not, this isn't giving the final edit so that there's, there's time, Dan.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah. And we have Don here too and Gail too.
If we could go to the end of growth area one on the recommended actions, it should end at 13.
Yeah.
Oops, page 13, sorry.
Uh, sorry, page 16 it looks like, but the red lines might be a little different. So that's showing 14. That's fine. I'm thinking maybe we could just put a placeholder in for the stormwater management slash watershed protection, recommended action that Susan brought up.
Yeah, I got an email from Susan and she mentioned that she had sent it to Andrew.
Okay. Did she have proposed content or anything other than what she had verbally?
I don't think she drafted it.
Okay.
I'm guessing she might be willing to, but...
That would be great, I mean...
So why don't we, yeah, can we...
She could do that.
Dean, I don't know if you're editing in real time on this at all?
This is in PDF version, so I'm gonna actually do it on paper, just old school.
That's fine. So I just would suggest that we bracket a new number 14 or whatever it will be, 15, for stormwater management slash watershed protection, Susan Morgenberg, to provide additional input.
Yeah, I mean, I have...
Just so we don't lose that. Do you have more from her on what she...
Well, I have her email. She basically said that there were three points she'd hoped to make and they apply to all three areas of town, that stormwater management should be considered in all cases of new development and redevelopment, especially village centers since it sits in the McCabe's Brook which is already impaired.
Mm-hmm.
And then two would be to seek opportunities to partner with organizations like Lewis Creek and government organizations, basin planners, to seek funding for stormwater management and Walder quality improvement projects. And I can forward this on to you guys, so you don't have to...
Yeah, okay.
...brantically take notes.
I like that. We can at least sketch out and fine tune it.
Yeah, the last one was just consider adding language encouraging the use of green stormwater infrastructure wherever feasible.
Yep.
And then she gives examples, rain gardens, green roofs, et cetera. So I mean, it doesn't sound like, I mean, as long as Kate's thought of intelligent ways to incorporate that through, I don't know that she's specifically looking for a unique call-out as...
I don't think we have to do that much more than what she already scripted out there. It might just be verbatim.
Yeah, if you can just email that, that'd be great and just get in.
But I think we should probably echo that in both one, two, and then rural.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we'll get into that as we start. So Kate, I'll turn it over to you since we're in growth area two now, beginning that discussion. And I'll just try to, you have your comments too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, yeah, that would be great, Dean. So, you know, one thing I have been sort of thinking about is what if we just take a perhaps even more slightly radical step in this direction and talk about hydrology as being this, the organizing principle for proceeding with all of this, you know? So, you know, and I'm not a scientist in this area, so I don't, I'm not sure I'm using all the right terminology, but basically, you know, think about planning for future development and redevelopment in terms of being able to accommodate this and maintaining our hydrologic systems, because that seems to be at bottom the most important thing. I mean, if you do that, you're, you're also serving the habitat issues, you're locating development in smart ways, you're, you know, that, you know, at least in theory enhance quality of life and, you know, promote compact development patterns. I mean, everything, it's like a scaffold that everything can kind of hang off. So I, it, as I was going, getting through this, I thought maybe we're being sort of, we're kind of beating around the bush. Maybe we should just be right up front and radically rethink how we plan everything.
So would the thinking there be that we take it beyond just a recommended action and move it more towards a goal?
I think, yeah. I mean, really almost up in the descriptor, you know, because this is my big insight after having done all of this editing work. So I guess it was useful but not terribly efficient, my process. But, but that was kind of my, the insight that I had and maybe that would also serve where Susan seems to be going with this. You know, rather than, because otherwise we're sort of integrating it as an afterthought, you know? And maybe it should be, if it's up front, well then that has implications for the entire form of the design and where it's loc, you know, the development, where it's located, all sorts of things. We're not just doing a kind of best fit approach, which then we have to mitigate for after the fact.
So just to take a minute to think out loud here on how we might wordsmith this, if I'm looking at goal, at the goal in growth area one, to ensure that Shelburne Village Center continues to function as a center of economic, civic, social, and cultural vitality, then we would follow with what, while maintaining or while enhancing, maintaining hydrologic? I just want to make sure we're, that for the people who are reading this, they sort of understand and we're speaking in the same...
Yeah.
...language, because hydrology to some people might just...
Yeah, and that's where, I don't even know if I'm using the right terminology, but it's just, it's, it's, you know, thinking with the watershed in mind, kind of that.
While promoting and, you guys weigh in here and help.
Where in this doc are you proposing to put this?
Well, we're thinking, how do we sort of tease this out through...
Growth area one right now. He's in growth area one.
Okay. Growth area one to, I think the comment from Kate was this sort of flows through all three sections, in the land use section which is growth area one, two, and rural, while promoting and...
Does it even go before that in land use in Shelburne, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I asked, because it sounded like you're saying that it's sort of a...
It's a kind of recognition that land use creates impacts.
A first statement.
This is sounding a little bit vision-ish, though, isn't it?
It is vision-ish.
And...
So I don't know, I don't know where, what the best place, maybe in the vision statement, back it all up even further? Sorry, I thought we had...
It's okay.
Thought we had that done, but...
It's the time to do it. As we said, we, the idea was to sort of keep that vision statement as a guiding...
Yeah.
...document that we know would probably get revised as we get further into this and discuss.
Well, and the virtue of, I guess, having it up there is that you can relate things back to it.
I'm just a second away from that because... I'm hoping that this is the right one that I'm grabbing here.
Looks like it. So maybe in that third paragraph?
Where we talk about how we're going to do it?
There's two references there, right? The natural resources and then the environmental stewardship.
Mm-hmm.
Those are your sort of hooks to tie it into.
Mm-hmm.
Because the other way to think about it is if your vision is environmental stewardship, you know, then the water stuff could flow more specifically later, because you've, you're sort of thinking 30,000 feet there.
Yeah.
Now you're drilling down later to more specifics. I suppose you could call out something about being more specific than just saying environmental stewardship, but...
I thought there was a reference specifically to water somewhere.
How about it, in, where it says the town's paramount interest in retaining its sense of community, instead of saying its natural resources, how about conserving its natural resources, which is a little more focused?
Right. Where is that?
That would be in the third paragraph, like the third line down.
Oh, yeah.
In retaining its sense of community in conserving its natural resources.
Yeah. I like that.
Well, the problem with that, right, is from a pure grammar English standpoint, you, you've got retaining and then you're listing three things. You've added a verb there, so you kind of have to go like retaining its sense of, you know, conserving its natural resources, something, its traditional character, maintaining, you know, and...
So why don't we just say, "interest in conserving its natural resources and retaining blah, blah, blah," right? Just flip it so that retaining can speak to those. Follow that, Dean?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Or conserving, how about this, conserving its natural resources while retaining its sense of community...
Yeah, I like that.
And its traditional character. So that puts the, the lens up front of, you know...
Yeah.
Environmental stewardship.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, it's good.
Natural resources, thumbs up.
Okay, that's probably all we need to say, don't you think?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So let's, uh...
Okay.
Want to kick off growth area two?
Sure.
And Dick, you two weigh, weigh in.
Okay.
As your comments come up, feel free to walk us through them. We have the annotated document in front of us that Dean had proposed some edits to based on just various updates.
So this is the one that I worked on yesterday?
I believe this is if, if...
Yep, I think so.
Yeah, this is the version I believe you were editing as recently as yesterday.
As yesterday, okay. Okay. So I was just attempting to just kind of shorten it, you know, wherever I can. So I started with, "Growth area two contains the majority of Shelburne's residential neighborhoods. It also hosts commercial and industrial activities that do not fit into the village center but are well-suited for other locations within the sewer service area. Growth area two is served by the municipal sewer system under the town's sewer service allocation ordinance." And just that, that's, that was that. And then I actually took that first goal out and just kind of talked a little bit And the next thing I said was, "Goals for this area. Growth area two shall absorb most of the town's future growth and most anticipated residential growth. This area will be characterized by development patterns that use land efficiently as such expensive municipal infrastructure warrants. Development shall be arranged to provide maximal protection to natural resources and new development will be laid out in a manner that enables and facilitates comfortable
So we deleted, let's see, deleted the caps, right? The whole goal? And then the, yeah.
Yeah, maybe this, maybe that could all become capitalized, you know, the goals for the area thing.
Mm-hmm.
I just took this out. It just didn't sort of really say very much to me.
Mm-hmm. Any thoughts? Comfortable?
I think what I need to do is, rather than try to incorporate what I did, is to absorb this document at some point, so I can see this document.
Yeah.
Because Kate and I do think somewhat alike.
Yep.
We are aligned on some things.
Occasionally.
You are.
So I think when we get done this evening, I'd like to be able to absorb this and see if any of my changes are really pertinent.
So you're saying, don't, don't, you mean, put that aside for the moment?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm more wordsmithing than, and Kate is kind of reconstructing, so it's...
Okay.
And wordsmithing, so, yeah, I'd like to just be able to look at that document and see if anything I had done is worth adding.
Okay.
Let's see, and then, so it talks about the four main areas and then the residential area, I just kind of made that a little pithier. We'd already talked about how, you know, it's, 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 that's going to be the most acreage will be devoted to new housing, basically, and then just mentioned where it is. I took out the stuff about pleasant neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then the next one, this is where I talk about the, tried to get the water quality and habitat and stuff in. So let's see, threading through the growth area and the village is a series of conserved parcels along the La Platte River. Most of these have been conserved or are town-owned. These areas have been identified on the La Platte River Greenway map and protecting them from the impacts of development is, probably should say is the town's top priority or something like that.
How about A?
Oh, A, okay, A, yeah.
The Natural Resources Committee.
Yeah, A, right. These areas contain significant natural features and wildlife habitat. In addition, these lands provide valuable stormwater function for the town. And so, you know, there may be better ways to say that or, or go in.
So your comments are in blue, right? This is a clean version of what Dean had marked up, correct? So your annotated comments are already reflected in this and she went over the top.
Yeah, Kate built on what had been done before.
Okay.
Yeah, I built on my edits.
Good.
I made some things a little pithier and, and, yeah.
So this should be the...
Added some new stuff.
Stuff that was done before the last meeting, the stuff that came out of the last meeting and Kate's new stuff.
So this, this looks like a spot where Susan, more Susan Morgenberg, you know, stuff could go in.
I mean, her specific call-out in that email was around the village which is growth area one, so...
This is growth area two.
Right, so we're focusing on growth area two, but, so I just, I don't know if we need to go back and look at that and make sure it's there or just that's something...
Or maybe she would be willing to take a look when we've kind of...
Yeah.
And just said, okay, here's how far we've carried the ball down the field.
Yeah.
You know, where, where are we missing some stuff that...
Can she access the working chair?
I haven't assigned it to her, but she could.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's probably, I mean, because she had talked about not being able to see some of the changes reflected and I didn't have time to say like, well, we're working on these doc, you know, like, so I just didn't know if she could act, if she...
It's straight Google Docs so that I can...
I mean, she, you would have had to share them for her to see the changes.
Given her editing privileges, everybody else has, she had viewing privileges before.
Got it.
Yeah. I mean, I can't speak for her, but I think it's safe to say she'd probably advocate for including that in district or growth area two as well as the rural district.
Yeah.
But let's...
And that might, there may be more, that may be not adequate a description. I don't know, but, you know, she's the scientist.
Yeah, no, I guess what I'm just trying to say is that, you know, we had done growth area one last week.
Mm-hmm.
There had been a note that it would reflect stormwater and then she looked at it before the meeting today and it doesn't reflect.
Yeah, because I didn't touch it.
Right.
Yeah.
So as long as she understands that and that we will circle back to that.
Yeah, I had emailed her in response to what she said this afternoon, so at least she gets some initial in response.
Yep.
All right.
But then I would agree with you, Jamie, that going forward in certain places...
Right, I think she would probably, yeah.
To fit it in here as well.
The third little section I didn't, I didn't touch. And then I, I had, I spent some time kind of rewriting the mixed-use area just to improve it a little bit and, and reflect all the work we've done on it.
Mm-hmm.
So let's see, yeah, Shelburne Road north of the village to the boundary with South Burlington, just to give a little more, you know, specific description, is, is a commercial thoroughfare that, it looks like I didn't get the articles in the right place, that serves mainly automobiles. Many of the town's neighborhoods lie to either side of it but are disconnected from one another and lack easy access to the school and to many daily needs. Regulations and infrastructure investments inadvertently led to this outcome. I mean, maybe we don't want to have that in there, I don't know, but it just, it seemed like, how did this happen might, might be of interest to somebody. The town aspires for this area, it looks like I was really working very quickly there and left out a lot of words, this area to feature more, a more diverse residential and commercial uses, to enhance livability in surrounding neighborhoods, and to introduce community identity that will enhance arrival to Shelburne. And then I, the next sentence just kind of talks a little bit about, okay, well, how are we going to do this? And it, the town... And the town recently adopted a form-based code overlay specific to this area that outlines a step-by-step process for retrofitting the corridor. And that may be a more aspirational, that it's a step-by-step process on my part. Oops. But at least we're trying to. Let's see. Okay. The code uses targeted approaches to improve the overall pattern and quality of development, and seeks to leverage underutilized existing assets, such as parking lots that are empty or half-full, high vacancies, and leftover pieces of land. The form-based code was adopted as an optional zoning overlay. Which was an improvement over some of my earlier, kind of admittedly snarky comments. Let's see. Growth area, then, the grow, oh, and then it just seemed to me that we should put the regulating plan, even though it's, you know, we refer to it, we should put that regulating plan in there, don't you think, Dean?
Uh, yeah.
Right now...
The town plan and the zoning maps line up, so...
Yeah. Just so people see what that is. Let's see. Because I think, I think one, you know, it'll really stand out that, you know, in this, it's just this blob over that whole area. And in the regulating plan, it's, it's, there's quite a bit more complexity.
Right, within the corridor.
Yeah. So objectives would be advertise the advantages of the form-based code overlay to developers and investors to encourage redevelopment of the Shelburne Road corridor with form-based solutions that enhance the community. Everywhere in Growth Area Two, promote development policies that protect natural resources, reduce auto-dependency, enhance public health for residents of all ages, and increase affordability. So that might be, you know, a spot to kind of pump up the, the water stuff.
Promote development policies.
Yep.
You know, or we might even want to flip that on its head. Instead of saying promote development policies, you know, look for opportunities to, to protect natural resources through development policies that, et cetera, et cetera, you know?
Right.
Kind of just refocus the, or underscore that that lens that we're looking at this is through the stewardship.
Yeah, I like that idea. I think of just saying, you know, yeah, promote development practices, or yeah, protect natural resources with development policies that...
By promoting development policies, yeah.
So we're going to start making those edits?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I just want to...
Does that work for you, Dick?
Yeah, I think so.
Does that seem to make some sense? Okay. Because I think, you know, my, my thinking was, as I worked through this, was like, gosh, you know, if we just protect the natural resources, like, by default, you're putting development where it's supposed to be. You're, you know, you're, you're doing a lot of things right.
And will it still lead off everywhere in Growth Area Two? Is that, I didn't catch whether or not that...
Yeah, I think so. It should...
I think you probably need one more little something there.
That emphasize compact development?
Yeah, I mean, she just had some languages about, you know, the, I can look at her language again.
Who's this?
Susan.
Oh, she had input on this?
You know, just encouraging the use of green stormwater infrastructure whenever feasible. I don't know whether...
Well, what, you know, one of the things, if you, a pattern of compact development, and that's not sprawled all over the place, is naturally more resilient, just by...
Right.
By its, its footprint, a smaller footprint, than some sprawly thing that then you have to have all of these after-the-fact mitigations to account for, you know, the, the impacts that it creates. So it's, you know, it's, it, smart growth is green growth, really.
Right.
So can I just ask a question about the logic in that, as it's currently drafted, number two? Protect natural resources by promoting development policies that reduce auto-dependency. I can get the air quality and auto-dependency connection.
Well, how about promoting, I think there, Andrew was suggesting there needs to be something more in there, which I think is, is right. Promoting development policies that require compact, that new development be compactly located, or something like that?
Well, the, the thing that really made me scratch my head a bit was the end. I was just wondering about how the promotion of the affordability was protecting the natural resources. That, that nexus is what I wasn't quite seeing, so something needed to...
Right, I think you could detach that piece and make that a second sentence that, you know, so you're saying something along the lines of everywhere in Growth Area Two, protect natural resources by promoting smart or compact development policies that, you know, reduce auto-dependencies, enhance public health, and increase... And I think that, that might be where you could call out something to the effect of stormwater management, period. And then something to the effect of, this development, you know, should not have a negative impact on affordability, you know? I think there's a way to reference that, because there are not. I don't think doing that... I see what you're saying, that affordability doesn't logically flow. I have a question here.
Just in that regard, I don't think you want to limit your water quality to just stormwater, because we have our other surface body and water and groundwater that also need protection.
Right, yeah.
You could just say enhance water quality and public health for residents of all ages, period. A secondary goal is to increase affordability, you know?
Yeah, it does seem like it's a little non-sequitur, right? Does it really flow with natural resources, or is that a different policy statement?
Well, why don't we say that reduce auto-dependency and enhance water quality, period?
I don't know, affordability needs to even be in there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It seems like it's...
Yeah, it's a separate...
It's its own animal, right? It's its own objective, right?
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying. So maybe, maybe we have an affordability thing, as you say, as its own, its own thing. Because that is an important objective of the Housing Committee, and maybe those guys could come up with something that... Because, you know, it, it's, it's not going to make sense to, not every place is going to be affordable. I mean, we know that, right? But it should be...
I think it needs to be its own objective.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just doing this to tie it together, just to, so that we...
Bracket it.
And we're talking specifically about housing affordability. I mean, it's, it's implied, but...
Yeah. That, I don't know. I don't know how protecting natural resources contributes to public health for residents of all ages. And I mean, who am I to say, but this thing has got about five different points, and they're all pointing in opposite directions to somebody like me. It's like watching sausage being made. It started out somewhat related, but... There's an awful lot in there. Why don't we just say that reduce auto-dependency and enhance water quality, and then, you know, put, just end it right there?
Yeah, with water quality, public health is a given, I don't think it needs to be there.
And, you know, and a pattern that reduces, a pattern of development that reduces auto-dependency is also going to improve public health. What I was ta, what I was trying to get to is there's, there's an issue of, for me at least, social equity in the built environment. We have a rapidly aging population in this town, and a lot of our older residents have stated that they would like to age in place, and at some point, they're not going to be able to drive. And so I think we need to be thinking about, how are they going to get around when they are driving a lot less or not driving anymore? And so, to the degree that we have, I just think we need to think about that. And, and it's also so kids can get around on their own, and not be, you know, have their entire childhood the experience of being incarcerated in car seats. So, but maybe just to end it at enhance water quality, and then... Maybe make a third point.
Does it, does it make sense at all to just make them separate objectives? It seems as though conflating them together is what's confusing people. And maybe we want to talk about the health and natural resources in one thing, and the walkability and aging in place and those kinds of things in another objective.
I think so, too. I mean, housing is its own affordability, public health, I, yeah, I think we can just try to script the second, another objective, and really try to make Number Two focused on natural resource protection.
So three that I want to follow.
Yeah. That looks good. That works.
Still think those two aren't related. Public health and housing affordability.
Yeah, I'd agree as well. I think it, I think that one needs a little work.
Well, if you...
I like, I agree with the concept, and I have heard the same thing about just...
But I think public health can still tie into Point Two, there just might be a way to finesse that better. I think the housing affordability is the one that needs to be pulled out as its own item.
They could go to enhancing water quality and public health.
Yeah, you know, I, I think the housing piece is, it's in its own section. So we get into affordability in the housing section of the plan, so... I'm, I'm wondering, does it make sense to even speak to that within the land use section? Maybe. Maybe it does.
I think it does.
Right? If the idea is that specifically within this particular growth area, we want to promote affordable housing, then that's what we should say. If it's something different, then, if it's more general, then I think it probably belongs in the housing section, if we want to speak to a specific townwide policy on affordability. Right?
Okay. Well, why don't we, why don't we...
That's how I think about it, is Growth Area Two, these are concrete objectives.
Well, why don't we take it out for now, and then we can add it, when we get to the housing thing, maybe it'll be clearer.
Yeah.
What we're supposed to, I, there's, I feel like we're, there's so many things swirling around.
So taking out housing, housing affordability for that?
For now, yeah.
I think so.
Just, we can add, we can add something back in, just to...
Can we make a comment just to revisit that, like margin comments or something, so that we know how to, when we get to that section of the plan, make sure that we revisit some of these? Or at least reconfirm that? I think that would be helpful, or we'll lose it.
Okay. And then, I'm ready to move on to the next one. The next, the next comment speaks to, at the village boundaries, which of course Growth Area Two surrounds, enhance sense of place in the historic village by clearly distinguishing the points at which the village area begins. These village entries are found on Shelburne Road, north of the La Platte Bridge, south of Boswick Road, on Harbor Road, near the Shelburne Community School, and on Irish Hill Road, just east of the La Platte River Bridge. The scale, density, and overall pattern of development in the historic village is a defining characteristic of the town and its setting. New growth, especially that which is adjacent to the village, should reflect historic village precedence for scale, lot organization, and building form types in accordance with the current design review guidelines, since they were just redone. Does that make sense to you guys?
Makes sense. I, I, so what we're saying there is, when we say adjacent to the village, what do we mean? New growth that abuts the village? My only concern is that, I'm not saying I don't agree with this, I'm just saying that the design guidelines really are village-specific, so I think once we extend that beyond the village, it's, it's okay if we want to make that statement. I think we should just be clear about...
I think it's really important that there be some kind of zone where there's a transition or a blending.
I agree.
Because otherwise, I think the worst thing that could happen is you just have a bunch of McMansions popping up right outside the village, which could happen. I mean, that's fine, and further out in its own setting, but the, I think that would just destroy the sense of place that's really important. So, I don't know, maybe there's a better way to say that.
Yeah, I think the key word there is probably the, somehow tying it in there, saying that, I mean, you're trying to say that they should be related, but they don't have to be exact, you know, so...
Right, I know, honor. Is honor too strong a word?
Or not to part from historic, you know, so you're saying, don't get too far away from this.
Right.
Versus be just like it.
Right, exactly. And, and that's why I spoke to things like scale, lot organization, building form types, so that it's, you know, it's, they don't have to look exactly like this. It's not like some, you know...
Right.
Disney, fake Disney thing like that, but, but there's, there's recognition that there's a form and a scale and a pattern to the historic village, and that, that it's important that development just outside it, you know, honors that. So it's not just this abrupt transition to something different.
So it should not depart from...
Well, that's the way, I was just looking at it. What are we trying to say? That it should echo it, reflect it? You know, are we saying it should look like this, or it shouldn't look too different from? And I guess that's a question, is what, what is...
What's the right verb?
Right. Well, what are we trying to say? That we want it to look close to that, or just not, not look too different from?
Yeah, that's, that's where I came up with, you know, reflect as, but it...
I mean, I was just running through my head, like, echo works in the same sense you have it. So, you know, as you leave the village, it shouldn't look like you've gone too far away.
I mean, reflection is something in a mirror, it looks like the other side.
Yeah, right.
Echo, the echoes get bigger, they get further away. So there's, I mean, I like, I like your idea.
Maybe echo.
Not depart from...
Okay, let's go with echo.
And I'd probably change, in accordance with, sounds very regulatory to me. So I'd almost want to, as contemplated by, or, you know what I mean? Something that's a little looser, not like, you need, you need to dive into the...
You could use reflect there.
Yeah.
Right? They should echo historic village's presence of scale.
As reflected?
And reflect current.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
In accordance with.
In the end, most of these points are established. This is the Falls Road that I believe everything on the left side is conserved and then the right side is rural at the top of the hill. And the same thing when you go up Route seven, Route seven is pretty much developed on the south side of town.
Now, the O'Brien let's not conserve?
Not on the right.
Yeah.
But it is rural.
Right.
But that could, that just means.
Good example of.
Five acre zoning McMansions, yeah. So that's, and that was actually what I was thinking of.
Inspired by.
And maybe we talk about them transitional areas, maybe that's a good way to, and we could even put some sort of like a donut around the village or something that we define as being important. Anyway, maybe that's a next step, but.
Yeah, let's keep moving through this. I, I like that, but let's.
Okay.
Let's.
All right, that's a work in progress, yeah. Okay, if and until such time as comprehensive physical form based regulations are enacted in the district, continue to require that development on parcels of three acres or more be treated as planned developments with design standards to achieve the desired mixed use neighborhoods. Ensure that Shelburne Road and development in the mixed use corridor is well served by pedestrian and bicycle amenities. Work to develop north-south pedestrian connections off Shelburne Road to connect the various neighborhoods north of the village and encourage vehicular connections between the boundaries of future residential developments. And this is where some of Ellen and Linda's.
Yes.
Comments start to come in, yeah, so which, is this 21, 21, okay. Well, so in the mixed use corridor, the, your comment of where appropriate is, it's, it's a lot more spelled out what's supposed to happen in the mixed use corridor, which is up on Route seven. So it's, it's, we can show you exactly.
You would like to show the mixed use corridor?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm just trying to find the quickest way to do that.
Or maybe the, just the, the character districts, the regulating plan.
Yeah, I'm just, okay. Brain fade here.
Yeah.
This section right here is, is talking about growth area two, right?
Yes.
Right, but it's talking about a specific part of growth area two, which is the mixed use district, which is up on Route seven. So what we're, what we're, the whole, one of the, one of the main objectives of doing that, that different kind of zoning was to tie in, to get away from that just being this big highway with neighborhoods behind that really, and anything they want to do, they have to go out on this highway to get back and forth. So they, those neighbors came to our meetings and told us that they wanted to have more kind of behind the scenes connections. So we're still trying to figure out what we, what we mean by that. And we're working with a consultant on refining those ideas. But that was something that was very much supported by the neighbors, the neighborhoods on those around Route seven.
Just ask a question. When you referred to the north-south walkability, did you want any east-west walkability as you think about? When I think about neighborhoods that go up Webster Road, for instance, they're not really connected east-west unless they go all the way over to Webster Road.
Neighborhoods.
Talking pedestrian, bicycle, or.
Yeah.
Motor vehicle.
Well, certainly by vehicle, but I was thinking pedestrian.
No, it's, it's true. Like I live in Boulder Hill and I have a house that, as the crow flies, is maybe 100 feet away from me. But if, and you can sneak through the woods to get there, but if a kid wanted to ride a bike over there, it's about a three quarters of a mile bike ride to go all the way out the neighborhood, down to Webster Road and all the way back in. So there is very limited east-west connectivity from Boulder Hill all the way down to, say, Farmstead or others. Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest gap is, is that one there, north-south, but.
Well, I.
Bike path is designed for that, you know, it's, it's not like it's a huge challenge for a kid. It would be nice if there was maybe more, you know, designated little cut-throughs to facilitate that, for sure.
So I, I thought we were just talking for the moment about the mixed use area, which is primarily a question of north-south connectivity. But you're absolutely right, in other areas, which I think we talked, talk about later and subsequently, that east-west becomes really important. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think that.
So where are we? Can we look back at that?
That that was specific to the, the mixed use area.
Can we scroll up just a little bit to see?
Yeah, let's see.
Maybe down.
There we go.
If and until such time is covered. In the district, so. Can we just scroll up?
Where?
Yeah.
Okay.
If and until such time, where is this? Is this new, oh wait, as comprehensive physical were enacted.
When we say the district, do we mean growth, do we mean growth area two, other parts of growth area two, or the whole?
There were before portions of growth area two, I think that's what district has in the past meant.
Okay.
What does it mean?
That it would mean that mixed use corridor portion of the growth area two. I think that's what it.
So when we say district, that's what we mean, we mean by that?
I think that's what it has.
Okay.
That it's meant.
So, I'm confused. Didn't, didn't we, we already adopted the form-based code?
But only as an overlay.
Right.
How many three acre lots are, there are a few. So we would want to hold that until we've.
Until, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, it's not a done deal yet.
Yeah, so I think we have to say are enacted as the default. Right, however we want to.
Yeah.
Describe that, as the default zoning district in the, as the, I don't know how to say it, the default zoning. In the mixed use district, yeah.
It's not just the mixed use district, that's one thing.
Cause it's commerce and industry too, right?
Yeah, because I just want to keep the references straight. The, there's not necessarily one-to-one correspondence.
Right.
Between the boundaries of the overlay, although it's largely the same.
Okay.
Because it picks up some residential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Work to develop north-south pedestrian connections off Shelburne Road, yeah, that, that is, in that specific area, that is the big challenge, is the north-south.
Is that bullet talking about the three acres or more new developments, or is that act, in addition to that, any?
It's, it's anything on Route seven, any, any of the, the, you know, the lots on, on, that are on Route seven. It's mostly commercial development with some residences behind, portions of residential neighborhoods behind.
Well, this does, four says, continue to require that developments on parcels. Okay, yeah, yeah, I hear you, gotcha.
Right, yeah. Until that becomes the default zoning, PUDs are required.
So, um, so I don't know, maybe, is, did that accidentally become like a bullet and maybe it used to be five or something? It's possible that I, that.
Yeah, I think it should be a new objective. It doesn't make sense just.
Yeah, there's something about the, yeah.
It was a bullet before, right?
It was a bullet before?
I think so, wasn't it this one that says, mixed use area does not become a suburban strip? Isn't that what you reworked to be this, or no?
I just think that, no matter where you're talking about. Putting. Putting as appropriate, every time you're injecting pedestrian and bicycle amenities, as appropriate, no matter where you're talking about, is going to give people, it's going to remove the, it's in the town plan, therefore it's going to happen.
So the problem with doing that is that it begs the question of where is it appropriate?
Well.
And, and the idea is that this should be guiding policy decisions made by not only us, select board, other boards and commissions. So I, I appreciate that comment, but I just, people sitting on this kind of board will struggle. If everywhere, we want to insert where appropriate, it seems to become a little bit of a kicking, kicking the can down the line, right? For me, sitting on a board, I think I struggle with.
It's not a definitive word and we're trying to write a reg that.
Appropriate to whom?
Give guidance.
Appropriate to the location. Anytime you're injecting changes, one change in one area may not be appropriate in another area. Or the type of change for one area may not be appropriate for another area. I just think that the plan has to allow for differences to not rubber stamp and push certain thoughts and ideas without allowing for common sense to prevail when something doesn't make sense in a location. Now, you might say, well, we've got zoning, we've got this, we've got the other, but we have seen that sometimes plans and proposals get thrown out and I haven't seen the checks and balances. And the town plan is what was used as the, this is why this is being done, because it's written in the town plan. So the town plan needs to protect as much as you protect water and natural resources, it has to protect the differences in areas from not being rubber stamped. That's basically the goal of every time we put as appropriate or where appropriate or when appropriate, is some places, things don't fly because they're not.
And, and I appreciate where you're coming from, Linda, however, in the Route seven corridor, we are to, the goal is to totally redesign that and allow redevelopment options that will completely remake that area in a, in a very new way. And that was done with an awful lot of input from neighbors in the surrounding neighborhoods there. And they want, they want a walkable, bikeable, safe community areas in that part of town. So that's where this comes from. So, you know, and, and the type of zoning that we developed for the Route seven corridors is this form-based zoning that's been described. And it's very specific about the different types of ways that this is to be accomplished. And it's much finer grained, much more context sensitive than what was shown a few months ago to the folks that live in and around Bay Road. So it's, you know, it, in other words, it's seen as very desirable by the neighbors who live there. So, you know, they would be wondering, if we put if appropriate, they'd be wondering why we put that in for that area.
Is there a particular area in that, this section of town, you think it's not appropriate? I guess I'm trying to understand where you're coming from.
Well, I'm not sure if my house is in the mixed use.
It isn't.
No.
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 One of the things that Parks and Rec added, or I don't know who added it, but Item seven is kind of interesting, caught my eye today. Ensure that existing roads and houses are not impacted adversely by future path connectivity. So that would seem to apply more for your street. And, and it could be added to, you know, you could say, other than, you could also say, you know, shouldn't interfere with parking on those small lots and perhaps lawns, small lawns, maybe views. But that would be the area, I think, to do what you want to do.
Another reference you had, and I wordsmithed it a little bit, but along the lines of, you know, when you're adding path connectivity, that, that should be guided by the pa, Bike and Paths Committee in close consultation with impacted landowners, neighborhoods, et cetera. You know, so that the bike path can have a vision and a plan, but anything that gets proposed publicly has to have been, you know, vetted or communicated closely with anybody who's going to live close by and impacted. So, yeah.
Dead on.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
The reason we included that is because we went to the Bike and Path Committee and they told us we had no voice. So it's really, it's important, I think, for you to put that in there, just so that when residents do go to these committees, they're allowed to speak. Cause we were told to be quiet.
With all due respect, I was at the meeting. They had an agenda. They made it very clear that there would be an opportunity to speak and open to the public, but it wasn't a free rein. They had an agenda that they got to go through.
Okay, well, fair enough. Let's, let's not retread.
But I, I just wanted to give you the context.
Okay, that's fair.
Context sensitivity is incredibly important to us. That's why we're rewriting this entire thing with this whole idea of looking at everything through protection of natural resources and view sheds and all of that. We're, we're trying, we, we are looking at a future where, you know, because of our location next to Burlington and very desirable place to live, we're looking at, you know, growth is going to happen, so we're trying to figure out how to accommodate it. And, but to do so in a way that we don't wreck the place in the process. So we're, I think we're, we're probably more on the same page than we all realize. And again, struggling to find the right words to put to all of this is, is, you know, it's a process for us too. But, yeah.
Let's get back on, on track here. So I think the bullet point would be a new number five, I think.
Yeah, I think so. So I took a, a lot of the other stuff out because it seemed like the form-based zoning really addresses a lot of that. And it, we didn't seem like we really needed it so much, but maybe I'm wrong, maybe if we're going to have the, if people can still do the optional zoning, it's important to have it in.
Okay, direct, so smart group.
I kind of like the second bullet. Is that one done?
Which one? Under which objective?
Under four, three, the old one, but. That's the problem with.
I know, the old four?
Yeah, now this is.
Are you okay with it becoming its own thing?
Ensure that the mixed use, okay. Does not become a suburban strip.
Yeah, I felt like, well, that one does kind of talk about both the form-based zone and the existing.
Well, you know, until.
It might be a helpful guide, maybe it needs to be, you know.
I, I, what I'm wondering, Dick, is until we have, as Jamie says, this becomes the de facto zoning, I mean, right now, people can, it's important to have that in there probably.
That's why I'm saying it.
Yeah, I mean, I was wrong in taking it out. I'm just thinking about that.
Mm-hmm.
Overly ambitious.
Do you see that one, Dean?
Yeah, I wasn't sure where you were.
So I think the reason you can't see it is because it was deleted in the annotated version.
Yeah.
And Kate marked up.
So, but is it in this, in this general area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it, what, what is now five was it as a bullet at some point?
The word to develop more stuff, or, because this was, what is now five was just a bullet.
Right.
I have it on my document. Do you want to see it?
Okay, I'm not sure why it's not here. But you would make it a bullet under five, or it would be a new six?
It was a bullet.
Okay, but what do you want it to be?
I'm not sure.
I think it should be.
I'm not sure if you're looking at what we're looking at.
I think it should be its own thing, and here's the reasoning, because so four says, recognizes that we have this overlay, this optional overlay. However, it's not the de facto zoning. So if, you know, I mean, maybe, maybe we just are clear about that. If you're not following the form-based zoning, this is what you need to do. And that would be five and all of the rest of the bullets hang off of that.
Do you have a way in the track changes to resurrect what was deleted?
Well, I'm just kind of flummoxed because.
You could just pull the bullets out of mine. I think it's still there.
The problem is she marked up a version, a clean version of what you had annotated, and you had deleted it.
Yeah, but it should still be there.
I don't think so.
Okay, in any event, though, if, if we want to revert this back to a bullet and essentially introduce it with a new, new language, then I can, I can do that. I mean, I think that's what you were just saying, right?
Just circle that in here.
I think the key was to maybe just pull this wording, resurrect it.
Give it to Dean, and we'll.
I looked at the one above. I don't know that we need that one, but that one said, encourage cluster development in the mixed-use area with buildings cited in groups, varying setbacks.
And then the annotated version had said for speedy approval, develop property according to the recently adopted form-based code overlay. So I don't know if we wanted that one as well, or part of it. For a lengthy approval process, follow the existing zone. Was that you, or was that Dean?
Yes, I got a little snarky.
I was going to say, it doesn't sound like neutral staff drafting that.
Do you want this, Dean?
No, that was me.
You surprised me before, so.
Yeah, I realize it would be nice to resurrect that. I guess what I have in paper copy here.
We should put for a lengthy, expensive approval.
And you have it printed out. It was in the paper copy?
That no one will like.
It's an interesting statement.
Dick has a paper copy.
Copy that I did. Do you want it?
Yeah, it's this one.
And I don't know about the top one, if we want part of that as well.
But we want to use this one.
This, that Dick was referring to.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, to the extent traditional zoning is still in existence, which it is, the thinking was, let's make sure we don't drop.
For now, you could probably just add a note that we will, you know, resurrect.
Well, I can probably actually just grab the text from, because it's basically the earlier plan. Okay, but again, we want this to be the new five, correct? Or?
Mm-hmm.
Ah, it's going to do it that way, hasn't it? And there was the one edit. A mixture of one to two and one and a half stories.
Yeah, Dick's edit.
Seems like the other two were already part of it.
These two?
Yeah, I think we already touched on, or Kate, did you combine that about transit?
These two.
Yeah. So are those still in?
I don't think so. I think transit was deleted.
Yeah, and I don't know that we need it. It seems like we've already talked about it somewhere else.
Well, you know what? I, I think I took that out because we already had transit.
I thought we did, too.
Yeah, we sort of don't really, it's not really an objective. We, we.
So we don't need more transit stops?
I don't think so, yeah.
No, we just, pretty well covered, I think.
Okay, wait, what are you talking about, the transit?
We're just looking at a couple.
A couple of bullets, we're just looking to see.
Okay, okay.
All right, Kate, why don't you keep pushing us through the objectives here?
Okay, so I think, are we a little further down, maybe? Okay, that's where I took out the transit stuff, because we have transit. We've succeeded in doing that.
Direct most of the town's growth, ensure that zoning regs, or pursue smart growth.
Keep going down.
Yeah. I think that kind of speaks to some of the things we were talking about. Um, let's see, okay, yeah. The following characteristics, and I sort of advised this, preserve open space, farmland, natural beauty and critical environmental areas. And then we might want to say something about water quality in there. That would seem like that would be. Strengthen and direct development towards existing communities.
Natural beauty is a little subjective, right?
Yeah, that might have been, I don't know. Scenic resources or something like that. Scenic assets or something.
Yeah, I like that better.
So how do you want to end?
Instead of natural beauty, we're going to take, we're going to put scenic assets. And critical environmental areas. Is that okay? I, I think we should probably add water quality to that, just to be.
And six point five, did that get direct removed?
Strengthen and direct development towards existing communities.
Residential parts of two, development of pleasant, compact neighborhoods. I had made some.
So I, I'm not sure how, how, how much this makes, strengthen and direct development towards existing communities. What I meant by that was just, you know, enhance existing communities, look for opportunities to support them, enhance them. Make them better. Foster distinctive, attractive communities with a strong sense of place. Compact patterns of building design with a range of housing opportunities and choices to accommodate more diversity in age and income ranges. And that was my way of trying to speak to the fact that we've had a lot of our long-term residents move off to South Burlington and Williston, because they can't find a place to downsize to. So, okay, walkable neighborhoods.
Something is missing.
Yeah. Oh, should be built according to standards in Table X or something like that?
Why don't we say promote walkable neighborhoods?
Yeah. Or promote.
What is Table X?
That's that, that's that thing that we did in the land use when we did the transportation, you know, we were.
The sidewalks?
Yeah, we were more specific about what we mean by that.
But this is, this is saying how the neighborhoods should be built according, the standards were, were standards for the bike ped facilities.
They're for the facilities.
Do we mean the facilities in neighborhoods?
Yeah, how about promote walkable neighborhoods? And with facilities. According to standards in table, whatever it is.
Okay.
I just wanted to raise a question, popping back to the top bullet there, not the one that's crossed out. One of the challenges that we found with some of the reviews we've done of some recent developments is that people are putting the, the housing in the forests because they want to protect the farmland, as it says in the zoning regs. And so there's a challenge there. You can't say, don't do it anywhere, clearly. And yet, we had a recent proposal come through that was specifically putting it into the forest because they wanted to preserve the butescap and the open land. So I wonder if you could say something rather than critical environmental areas. Add habitat to that or something like that, that would.
Sure, yeah.
Give some rationale for protecting the forests when that's appropriate.
Okay. Forest cover and other, or forest. Forest cover habitat, I don't know what.
Yeah, I made a comment in the rural section on that. I don't know if we'll get to it, but. I agree. I think forest, I think I had sort of noted forest blocks. And I was thinking about parcelization and things that we've covered in previous meetings.
Yeah, because that was one of the things that Jens emphasized when he came, that the contiguous forest blocks are really important in terms of what they, yeah, so maybe just state that.
The forest is also really critical in terms of stormwater, salt stream.
Yeah, yeah.
If there's a way to be able to not make it sound like, well, don't build anywhere because we know that we're going to have to, just some, some way to be able to evaluate it critically when you're looking at farmland versus forest on any given piece of property.
Okay. So, you know, one thing, we were talked about in the rural areas, using conservation subdivision design. I know we're kind of, that's the next thing to come, but, um, I mean, I don't know that, you know, is conservation subdivision design appropriate in an area that you want to be a growth area? You know, that's a question, that seems like the form-based, a form-based approach is really effective for, for that. Because you want to maximize the density there, so you're not sending it out to the rural area. But it, it, it just highlights kind of lack right now in our regulations.
And these bullets speak to what? This is for PUDs? These are the characteristics we want to.
This is for.
Encourage in PUDs, right?
Yes, uh-huh. Okay, do you want to scoot down?
Yeah.
Finish up. Bicycle pedestrian paths that connect residential neighborhoods to each other, to transit stops, to the village and to other attractions. And I think that was just, that was in the existing plan, I think. Streets connecting future neighborhoods to eliminate the need to go onto collectors. Overall density, residential, residential density in growth area two should be lower than in the village residential areas, but higher than in the rural areas. And I don't know, that seemed to me something to, that seemed kind of like a pretty wishy-washy statement to me.
It's kind of a repeat, too, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like it should be maybe lower than what's in the village, but considerably higher than what's in the rural areas. Because otherwise, if we just have it be this kind of in-between.
I'm sort of leaning the other way on that.
Well, but if, if we don't, Dick, don't you think it's all going to go out into the rural areas?
I think, um, you talk about pleasant, compact neighborhoods, and that's a lot of what is Falls area, Mount Philo Road and Marset Road, those areas are pretty well developed. I think encouraging maybe, you know, uh, family housing where you can expand and bring a, you know, a mother-in-law apartment, that kind of thing, or if the zoning allows it. But to target that area as a future growth area, when in fact it's, most of the people that live in there are pretty happy. You don't see real estate signs popping up there like you do in some communities. People want to live in those, in that environment.
Well, then maybe we should add that in as a bullet, you know, to encourage, enable future density through, you know, encourage accessory dwelling units to enable future density, because those are all served by the sewer service.
And some of those lots are, a few, probably half of those lots are suitable for expansion.
Right. So, well, why don't we say something like that?
But to encourage a higher density zoning would, would not be something I'd want to see.
Well, but what, I think our discussion is showing that there are different ways to achieve that. You know, one would be to make more efficient use of existing lots.
Isn't it just higher relative to the rural district? Isn't that the idea, that the core?
Right, right.
Is the most dense, and then as you sort of flow out.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what, what that number is yet, and that would seem like that would be.
That's all this is saying, right? Is that relative to each district?
I guess it depends a little bit how you look at it, too, right? The residential area, or growth area one is small and dense. Growth area two is big and sort of dense, but you're talking about the average density throughout, you know? Like, it's always going to be off just because of the factor of size, but.
Oh, there are areas in, in the growth area that are, are still quite large.
And there's big forest tracks.
Well, that's, of course.
Yeah. Well, like the Webster Farm, and, yeah.
Well, it's density potential, right? It's not necessarily the current built environment, it's.
And that's where, that's where I'm kind of thinking, if we look at everything through the lens of what, you know, is sustainable from a stormwater, water quality standpoint, that might kind of suggest that some areas, what the density of, I mean, do, we have a kind of one-size-fits-all approach to the density right now. Maybe if we look at what the, the land, the carrying potential of the land is a little, little more.
I guess, but are you trying to say that overall, the, the average density, I mean, the, in general, the density on average is going to be denser in the village, less dense in growth area two, left, further.
That's what people in the town should, you know, want.
Right.
Just think of typical lot size. I mean, that's.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
And our challenge.
Saying that we don't want it to be, we don't want growth area two being as dense as the village, is what that's saying.
Right.
And the rural should be less dense than.
But I guess what I'm saying is that some areas of growth area two could be as dense or even denser than the village.
That's what I think.
But on average, it's, that growth area is not, you know, so it's a sort of mathematical average of taking the whole area. And we average it out, it's a lot less dense, even though it's obviously still a lot larger.
In aggregate, yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's correct, yes. So, um.
But I mean, as long as you're making it clear that you're not saying no area in growth area two should be denser than the village, right?
Right.
That's, you're not trying to say.
And maybe that's the way to put it. No area in growth area two should be denser than the village. Or, I don't know, maybe, maybe we don't want to say that. I don't know.
Because under form-based zoning, I'm pretty sure there are places along the Route seven corridor that would be.
Denser.
Right, and there are also parts of the village that are, are not particularly dense.
Yeah, no, but I mean, even think of like my neighborhood, where I lived, Boulder Hill, right? They shrunk the size of the expandable land that they could build on because it wasn't great building, and then made it much denser. You know, were big houses that are pretty tightly together, which to me is a feature, not a bug. It's great.
We have open land as well.
We have open land, you know, so I think, that's why I want to try and understand, like, how you phrase it's important in terms of, like, the average density, it's going to be a lot less dense, but you may want some pretty compactly dense areas in growth area two so that you're preserving natural habitat for us, et cetera.
You're putting, you're putting the density where it makes sense for it to be. There are going to be some parts that are, so, you know, maybe, maybe it's. There are going to be some parts that are, so, you know, maybe, maybe it's a question of enabling that more flexibility about in lots and how compact things can be, the footprint of development.
Right, but I guess you could say something to the effect of, overall, you know, average residential density in growth area two should be lower than the village, but higher in the rural areas, you know? And you could have a caveat saying that, you know-
As appropriate.
Yeah. But, you know, the fact that, you know, compact development may mean that, you know, pockets of it will be quite dense, but I don't know how you say both of those things.
PUD.
Yeah.
Okay. So are we comfortable with that statement, I think?
I think, yeah.
All right. Look for and pursue opportunities to provide further connections for non-motorized travel between Spear, between Spear Street and Shelburne Road. So that's the east-west idea, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where appropriate.
All right. Recommended actions, we have ten minutes on the schedule to, we can go over, but just giving you a sense of time.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see, some of this was from earlier, just periodically reexamine allowed uses dimensional and design standards and access requirements in growth area two and revise the zoning as appropriate. Undertake a survey of visual preferences for the mixed-use corridor and apply the results to ensure that development achieves the above objectives and accommodates mixed-use development while becoming an attractive prelude to the village. Let's see. Update regulations relating to signage circulation and vehicular traffic impacts on Shelburne Road and its intersections and promote alternative modes of transportation. Continue to refine form-based zoning requirements in the Shelburne Road corridor and adjoining Revise subdivision standards to require compact neighborhoods with street trees, narrow streets, sidewalks, bicycle pedestrian paths, and open spaces. Whenever possible, bicycle pedestrian paths should connect neighborhoods. Such regulations should also specify that subdivision designs will accommodate significant natural features and access to the public where appropriate. Let's see. Oh, revise the town's public work standards so that pedestrians are on par with automobiles. Ensure that roads in the residential areas are no wider than necessary to provide safe residential and emergency vehicle access. And I-
I'm sorry, I only have only got ten minutes.
Sure.
What does the town public work standards relate to?
It's, it relates to, it's, it's, it's an, or, the standards are, you can look at them, they're on the website, and they basically tell how, you know, new roads are to be constructed and so-
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. So, for example, when Harrington Village was, was done in, in, in the village, you know, that Harrington Village Road is as wide as Route 7 is. A lot of us think that that was maybe a bit overkill. So, it, you know, it's allowing things to, there to be street trees, for example, on the roads. There didn't used to be allowed to be street trees. It's, it's addressing all of those things. And then if, if a sidewalk is constructed, how that's supposed to happen as well.
And just the historical background would be that, you know, most of these rules and regulations are designed, the reason Kate brings it up is, are designed to accommodate cars only, right? So you have roads that are, say, two lanes in each direction, and a pedestrian trying to cross them literally can't get across all four lanes by the time the walk signal changes. You know, you've all experienced situations like that. So there's sort of a move afoot to try and look at, you know, the built environment and making people and bikes and other modes of transportation equal to cars. You know, the cars have the upper hand in every situation, and car pedestrian, you know, cars are going to win physically, but design it in a way that it's safer for people. So, roads don't have to be as wide as maybe some specs would say they should be now. You have other issues with the, like cul-de-sacs, you know, so that the fire truck can turn around, or the school bus can turn around. That creates some pretty ugly design and development, but-
With lots of stormwater impacts.
But they're required because of the rules.
So, it, this would be, you know, it, this is a, we haven't even done this, and it's something that we aspire to get to sooner rather than later, but, you know, that, that would be the, like, a place where it'd be great to have your input on how things like sidewalks and stuff like that get built and paths. You know, what do we mean by that? It's, it's where that is laid out, and, and that's where you can really get into, in this kind of a situation, this would be acceptable. In this kind of a situation, you could, you know, a range of other things could happen.
We'll definitely be watching when the transportation section comes up for rewrite.
Yeah.
But this did pertain to our neighborhoods, so that's why we looked at it and threw in our comments. You guys do a lot of work. This is commendable. It's a lot of work.
So, one of, one of our challenges, Linda, is, we talk about these as, you know, goals and aspirations that we have, but then we, our public work standard, you know, doesn't really reflect some of that fine-grained thought that we've put into this. We just, we have to, that's the next, another thing we have to try and get to. We have to kind of do this incrementally, and we're always kind of playing catch-up.
I just want to say, everything that you're doing, when it pertains to new development, new roads, that's great, because anybody that's going to move there knows what's going to be there ahead of time. My sole purpose is to have the town plan protect the existing roads from overencroachment of some of the stuff. And obviously pedestrian bike path based on the scare that Bayrod had. So, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. The as-appropriates, I think you've kind of caught on to. But actually, those were no more voluminous than, than the inserts of bike and pedestrian path in the regulation that was just passed in March for, what is it, site review plans. So there's a lot of attention to including that everywhere. But on the other hand, existing places, I've made my point. I think you know where I'm coming from.
They have to be retrofitted very carefully and with great care to not screw up the existing context.
And I think the town plan can and should, when we get to transportation, have allowances in there, just stating that very fact.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. It's okay. So, number seven, let's see. Consider locating a portion of the corridor.
Yeah. Dean, was this you doing some of this editing?
This was, this goes back to-
Somebody was doing it.
-information that was presented a couple of meetings ago.
Oh, okay.
It was really just tightening up the wording a bit, but not, not pulling out any of the ideas.
It, it kind of looked good to me, so I just sort of skated over it.
Mm-hmm.
So this is where some of the-
Yeah, some stormwater piece.
-water quality stuff gets in.
I'm good with those, yeah.
Is, can you make a, can you use a stronger word than promote, or is that as strong as you can kind of get in this type of a document? In other words, require green stormwater, especially low-impact development? You can't?
Well, I can, yeah, I think you could.
Right.
The, the light, you could say require, it-
Or-
It might cause a little bit of confusion in the minds of some, because they might say, well, it says require in the plan, and so when a development, development application comes forward, someone might say that the language in the plan justifies the DRB imposing a requirement, but it really wouldn't. It takes the planning commission building on the language that says require and making the changes to the regs for that to actually happen. But it's a stronger signal.
Can I, can I-
Well, I guess I just look at promote as too weak.
Can I give you a reason why you might not want to do that? Because low-impact development techniques and green stormwater infrastructure mean some pretty specific things, and there are other ways to approach this. For example, they're also very much, it, it's getting better, but they're, they're still, the presumption is a, a, a kind of auto-dominant environment. And then you've got these expensive mitigation things that come in after the fact. And what I think, I, I'm, well, I'm encouraging the commission to consider moving in a different direction, which is, let's think about what we want to try and achieve on the raw land first, or the redeveloping land, and then design, let that be, set the program for how the development pattern proceeds from there. And so, you know, that would allow a little bit more flexibility. For example, if you have houses on smaller lots, like you were just saying, and things are a little closer to the street, well, then if you had some big old clunky green stormwater infrastructure thing, or rain garden on everybody's front lawn, well, then that would automatically mean you'd have to have bigger lots with bigger setbacks and-
Right.
-all of those kinds of things. So if you just, if you reconceive how all of the development is integrated on the site in the first place, you can have a smaller footprint. So it-
Well, that's what I guess-
So, so it's, it's, it's very meritorious, because not everybody's going to want to do that, and we have to give them some guidance, but, you know, we, we want to be a little bit more flexible about how we achieve our ends, I think. So that's why I would not favor require in that instance.
And I was asking it more theoretically, right? Require would be the extreme case.
Yeah.
Promote seems, to me, maybe just a little too, is there something in between?
Yeah.
You know, like, use of green stormwater infrastructure and low-impact development techniques aren't preferred?
Could you say?
Yeah.
Or prioritize use of, right?
Yeah.
So you want to prioritize?
Why do you like? Require.
They're saying sort of the same thing. I guess I, I like, just phrasing-wise, I guess I would say use of green stormwater and low-impact technologies are preferred. But if the wording of other phrases are, you know, verge, using the verb upfront, I'm fine with prioritize the use of.
Or how about just use green stormwater infrastructure and low-impact development techniques?
That makes, that's pretty good. That sounds mandatory to me, if you say use.
Okay.
But, can't get rid of of then, but-
All right, why don't you say that, that's preferred, green infrastructure and low-impact techniques is-
So use of-
Is it preferred or encouraged, or something like that?
It's preferred.
I mean, maybe you could, you could put something in there, like, the goal is to protect the watershed.
Right.
Like, we don't care how you do it, you know? Because, because this is, this is really just a methodology, and methodologies change.
Right.
So, update regulations regarding-
How about regarding the treatment and management of stormwater to protect the watershed?
Well, you know, Don's point earlier was that it's more than just stormwater, so I, the only other thing that came to mind was how do you fold that in?
But remember, it's, so it's an action for as we, if and when we get back into updating the bylaw with respect to stormwater.
Right.
The idea here is, let's prioritize GSI and LID.
Right.
Techniques within those updates. I think that's what we're trying to say, and not go back to an objective. This is the more tactical. When we do this, this is what we want to focus on.
And one thing to consider is that you've already built some of that and are in the process of building some of it into the form-based zoning district.
Yeah.
So maybe you'd want this language to emphasize doing it town-wide?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that, say, simply saying protect doesn't seem to square when you hear the engineers at a development review, because they ascertain definitively that whatever they're proposing is exactly what's going to protect it, and it meets all the standards. And so if you really want to prioritize those kinds of things, I think it makes sense to say so.
Yeah, I agree. Joe, a specific use of the word protect you were worried about here?
I'm sorry?
Well, you just said the word protect isn't, was there a particular use of protect here that you object to?
No, it was just that I liked the idea of using some of those other words instead, like prioritize.
Yeah, got it, okay.
How about update regulations regarding the treatment and management of stormwater and water quality to protect the, the watershed? Because that's really the, the bigger goal. And then not worry so much about how it's done. Or, you know, because I think, hopefully, we're going to have some pretty great stormwater regulations from the form-based zoning area that will, we can kind of template, use to template in other parts.
Sean.
I would just suggest too that you might want to include language to try to incentivize the, the green stormwater infrastructure, low-impact development, because at least in our committee, and you probably see this as well, a lot of the developers will say that the state doesn't require it, the town doesn't require it, so they, it's just not cost-effective for them to do it. At least at this point. Maybe in the future it'll be cost-effective, but if there's some way to imagine incentives that would encourage more of that in lieu of actual regulations, that would probably be difficult to have passed at this point, that, I think that, that might help.
So would you want the last sentence to be something like, create incentives for the use of green stormwater infrastructure and low-impact development techniques?
I think we've created a lot of incentives already, this whole idea of form-based zoning.
But, but it's only in one spot, though.
Yeah, so this is growth area two, remember, which is much bigger than the corridor.
Yeah. We're sort of protected only in that one area for now. So it's really, and, and I think, you know, these guys, they're in the trenches, you know? This is the, the perspective.
So Sean's suggestion is create incentives for the use, however that's said.
I would prefer to create regs that will bring this about, as opposed to incentives. Just from, from being on a DRB, if you create a hole, you just, it can be a mess. So I think we should work harder to have this say what we want to do, as opposed to putting incentives.
I agree wholeheartedly, if you, if it can actually happen, if there'd be the political will to impose that, but it seems that that would be a difficult sell. So that's why I wonder if there's an alternative route to achieve the same goal.
So maybe what we could say is go back to that prioritize the use of, and then just add including the creation of incentives. You know what I mean?
It's like when you create a waiver.
Dick, would you be all right with that? If we said prioritize, or however we want to structure that?
Right.
Just adding that notion of including creation of incentives.
I don't, I don't-
You don't like incentives?
I like, I like, I like incentives. I like it. Just, just whatever.
How come you don't like incentives, Dick?
I don't like them because they're like waivers, and you have a waiver, it's part of the rule, so.
Well, the incentive would be something that we, or whoever's sitting in this chair, develops as part of the bylaw, creation around whatever it is we're doing. So we may just say, hey, town plan says, let's make sure we address incentives.
Could we do it as carefully created incentives?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Just so we'll think about it when we have to, the time comes.
Okay. Include, we're saying, qualify this with including carefully created-
Incentives.
Incentives. Carefully. Incentives. Carefully. Just remind us.
Okay, and then the rest, I mean, I, this was, just looked fine to me. This was existing stuff that was.
So. It's almost nine. We can do two things. We have most of our natural resources committee here, so I would like to almost take advantage of having you in the room. If you're willing to stay a little bit, if we jump into the rural district.
It's not, it's not huge.
We can also, you know, take any input or comments you have up front, so you don't have to stay that late. If that would be helpful. But, but you're, I know, but you're, you're here and I, I would, instead of just punting on the rural discussion.
I did one of them that I didn't think that the discussion with rural would go very far.
We may not get that far into it, but I think we should start it since the rest of the agenda, we're, we're just going to touch on a quick update to the form-based code. And that'll take five minutes for us to do.
I wanted to make, yeah. We'll lay it back here. I wanted to make one point that's relevant to both growth area two and rural. But I think is, is missing in my eye. We have a critical view shed map. It's old, needs to be updated. It also needs to be enforced, I, I think, my, my opinion. Because when you look at the town and the growth that's happening. These view sheds are getting swamped by the sprawl. And we do not have strong enforcement mechanisms for these. So in growth area two, I was looking at that map earlier this evening and there are a few primary and secondary view sheds. There is no language that protects them. Same we'll find in the rural areas when we get to there, so. I've noticed South Burlington has more specific regulatory language for view sheds and.
I did add some in my comments that I got to yesterday, so hopefully you'll, it'll, you know, you'll think it's a, you know, at least a start in the right direction.
And is that in growth area two?
No, it's in the rural area.
And rural, in your comment?
Well, the view sheds, I, I saw the, when you look at the map, it's been in growth area two and rural.
Yeah.
Not so much opportunity in the village.
Yep. And is there a suggestion to sort of take it beyond just here's a map, it may be helpful?
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah, I mean, we saw a lot of this during the cell tower conversation we had when we developed that ordinance and that entire dialogue around.
And this relates to that whole thing we were talking about, about the transition between the village and the growth area. So that, you know, it, it's a definitely a finer-grained way to look at these issues.
Could we, let's see, how do we capture that in growth area two? Can we just add that? I think we're good on the objective piece of it, right? Scenic assets would sort of be view carters, in my opinion. It's just a question of do we add a recommended action specifically focused on updating the view shed map?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that would be a great idea.
More, more study.
First step for us to do as well as consider enhanced protections to.
Just to remind you that some, some of those things may actually al- also go in the natural.
Scenic resources have in the past when identified in the natural and scenic resources section.
So park it for now and then?
Well, I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah.
Just traditionally, the plan has dealt with that issue as part of that. Doesn't mean it couldn't be both places, but I think you're trying to.
I don't, I mean, I think.
At least.
I don't think it matters where it is necessarily. It's more as long as that content is in there and the action is to really update it. I don't think you care, right? If it's in the land use or natural resources, right?
Can be enforced.
Right.
Yeah.
Not waived.
Okay. Could we just make a?
Yeah.
A comment or in your own?
I think one of the things that will be helpful for people to be thinking about is, well, what type of regulation is there in mind? Yeah.
When we did the original open space plan, we talked a little bit about the, the near-term view sheds. The midterm view sheds and the distant view sheds, and that might be something to keep in mind.
Okay.
As a way to sort of define where regulation takes place and what constitutes the value there.
Brandy did some, Brandy.
We, we're on the quorum, so let's just.
Oh.
Sit tight for a few minutes. We can recess for a minute if everybody's all right with it.
Stretch break.
Yes.
So when are you going to take up the critical view shed map, you said?
It'll be part of the discussion of natural resources.
Yeah.
You are the contact person for that, am I right?
Oh, I am, okay. I can't remember what I'm doing. I was just.
Did I tell you guys that he was? I, I thought I did.
I got whatever everybody else doesn't wanna do, so.
They don't wanna do that.
I do. I am thrilled to work on that one, actually.
That's, yeah, that's what I told them.
That's an important one.
Are you? This, this one?
Yeah, I did. So what's, I'm missing twenty-four.
I'm gonna figure it out.
Got it here, but I don't have it.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
I knew I made a couple of changes, so. I really didn't see a whole lot wrong with the rural because it's so short. It's a guidance thing. I think the issues are more clarifying language in the zoning. For me.
Yeah. Well, let's chat.
All right, Andrew's back. We lost our quorum, so we just paused momentarily. You're good. We are reconvened here and I guess instead of what I might suggest, instead of going just line by line. And section by section in the rural, maybe we could just touch on the highlights, key changes. In your mind, Kate, right? Since I think you did the heavy lifting on, on the update. Is that fair?
I, I did. Let's see, we can just, uh, let's see.
Instead of just a read-through, since we're going to pick this back up at the next meeting inevitably.
Okay, so here, here we, here, this is what I added. Minimize infringement on the rural qualities of the town by retrofitting such areas. Okay, so if you wanna scoot up just a little bit, Dean, this is what, okay. Some of the rural area experienced, has experienced residential development that is not consistent with the overall rural character. And then it is the town's policy that these residential areas shall not be expanded and that additional development within them shall be limited. In order to minimize the infringement on the rural qualities of the town. And I wanted to just put out, I kind of disagree with that. To my mind, in those areas, the damage is done and all we're gonna do is, is create more sprawl pressure. In the sort of pristine areas. So I wanted to suggest, and I know this might not be what everybody else thinks. But to minimize infringement on the rural qualities of the town by retrofitting such areas as rural hamlets. Using form-based zoning to template and achieve desired forms. So kind of a little bit of rural infilling, as it were, which might incorporate things like community septic. So we don't have to expand the sewer service area. Balance conservation and development objectives by pursuing conservation design for subdivisions to maximize open space. And view shed preservation and foster working agricultural lands without reducing overall building density. And then I, just as a, like, thinking a little bit further, I wanted to think about, maybe we wanna not treat the rural area. Which is, you know, some parts are very high-quality, some parts maybe not so high-quality, quite so monolithically. And maybe it, some areas it would be appropriate to downzone and upzone in hamlet areas. And we also have, you know, I didn't get into it in this, but I was also thinking about, you know, we do have. The open space, the, the, the funding, you know, strategically kind of where, where opportunities arise. To maybe purchase a view shed easement or something like that, you know? It just seems like we could creatively use some of those resources. That we already have a little more effectively. So anyway, I just wanted to sort of, it's a big conversation topic, just introduce it for you guys to think about.
Really good.
Like, how do we, you know, you have, you made the open space fine, okay, well, how do we put that into action?
I had made a note about downzoning being a, a conversation for us to probably have at this juncture. And maybe that concept is something that, I know you have a strong opinion about this and I think everybody probably does, but. And it's one that we definitely want to solicit as much public input as possible since that could be a.
Cause it's important to realize that right now, we have five-acre zoning everywhere in the rural area, you know? And so far, we've kind of dodged that bullet, but you know, look what's happening in South Burlington is creeping towards us. So, you know, I think it's worth having a conversation about that. Maybe there are some parts of the town that really should be very much.
I think there are controls, Kate, though. We have a P, mandatory PUD, is it three units?
Uh, no, it's over five.
Five, maybe we should adjust that. And the soils in that area are traditionally very poor and I think that's one of the reasons we're not seeing development as much as. I don't think that we're going to see the kind of development we've seen in the past.
Well, we've seen the map. I mean, when we look at the build-out, right, we just looked at that not too many meetings ago. And the housing committee did some work on this too, right? Within the.
They did do some.
I mean, we looked at the map that sort of plugged all the recent.
But did they do it based on?
Development or rural district?
On soils.
Well, they didn't, they didn't do a build-out.
They just plotted it based on new development, right, by year, by.
Yeah, they shown the, the pattern.
Year periods, just the pattern that gave you the broader.
Yeah, I think five.
Brush stroke of, you know, starting to creep into the rural district. That was sort of the, the takeaway, in my opinion, when I saw that map.
I think I've got that.
Yeah, the percentage of new development in the rural area was pretty high.
Right.
Right.
It was like thirty-three percent of all new development.
Right.
I don't think that's true.
I think if we, if we did a study, I believe that you would find that what is left is not the same type of property that's been developed. That there, there may be a hole here and there. And I know there's a couple of places where there's been. A subdivision approved that wasn't built. But I still think in general, we'd be better, I think it would be, if we wanna maintain a rural area. We can do it just by requiring PUDs for three lots or two lots. Or actually, maybe everything should be a PUD in the rural area. That way you get that control. Without having to downzone or upzone. I just. I'd be surprised if there are very many areas right now that could do anything without sewer going out there.
Well.
Think so? I mean, I don't know.
I'd say I disagree. I think people will just build a mound.
Yeah.
Craps, crap soils, just build a mound, you know? So, and, and the technology's getting better and better that way, you know? So I think we have to be really careful, you know, we have these, you know, thousand-foot driveways and, I mean, it, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot, a lot of fragmentation. So enabling more density to go in growth area two makes intuitive sense to me.
Right.
And then leveraging where those places are where maybe things have gotten a little out of control. You know, can, can we do some creative infilling in those places to, so that people can, can feel like they're living in a more rural part of the town? Some people really like that and that has to be recognized and I think respected, but that it's not happening in this. At the cost of just creating all of this sprawl everywhere.
Can, can you give an example, and maybe a little uncomfortable, but can you give an example of a kind of place that is one of those infill places? Maybe that will help people understand. It'd help me.
Well, I, I don't know. Well, the, the people who were in, who've come in several times, I've forgotten their names, who want to. They have ten acres, but it's not really appropriate. The Mooniers, yeah. So, you know, there's, that's a, that's an example of. A development request that's come up several times. I mean, maybe we look a little more closely at that area. And if there are people in that little spot that would be interested in that, you know? The other, the other area that seems to me to be potentially kind of hamlet potential would be the folks who are. Off of Mount Philo and the airport area where they have terrible soils. Their septics are on the Fritz or, you know, it, it, it's something they're very worried about. You know, community septic seems like that would be a real solution there. Well, maybe that's an area that already has.
Yeah, I agree on that.
A fair amount of development. Maybe that could be.
That is a node in itself.
It is. Could, could that, could that have a little bit more infill in, in some way in, in that area?
Is the idea that perhaps municipal sewer would go there to facilitate it?
Not necessarily. I was thinking maybe that you could solve their sewer problem either with community septic. Which would then not put the burden on all the rest of us to bring that municipal sewer out. Cause I think that that, in judging from what happened a few years ago, that would be, you know, there's a lot of, of, of resistance to doing that. But, you know, are, there are other ways to do this, so I just, I think, to sum up. I think people are going to develop in the rural areas unless we really guide how we want that to happen. And I think all options should be on the table for shaping that. And secondly, I think that we should think about encouraging hamlets in certain areas where it might make sense. And there might be interest in doing that. So.
And would the hamlets take the form of, is that the idea with the conservation PUD?
Yeah, you could, you could really.
Sort of how we want programmatically to look?
You could use the conservation PUD as a sort of form-based code light or something. For how you might want to imagine a future area, a, a few, the build-out for that area. And I would think that that would involve all of those property owners and saying, okay, you know, here's, here's what. Here's what we understand you would like, here's what we would like and, you know, is there some, can we meet somewhere in the middle and make this work for everybody?
I think you should get your boots and take a walk on that property.
Where, what property?
The property you're talking about is, is completely loaded. No, no, the one on.
The airport red?
Yeah. It's all springs.
Well, I don't know.
The reason their sewers are all failing is because it's, the wet, it's so wet there.
Yeah.
Stormwater will be just worse if we increase development. I think if you were looking at some, maybe the airport itself. Has got some decent soils, but I would be surprised if that hillside, there's a three-acre lot across the road from the bottom of there. That is a legal lot and nobody can put a septic system in it, three acres.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I don't, I, I can't speculate on any, anything right here. But it just seems that there are some places where, you know, to, to treat those areas as, as being sort of as sacred. As maybe areas around Shelburne Pond or, you know, Pond Road or something, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, you know, there's.
So let's, so Kate's put it out there. I don't think we're going to resolve it tonight, but I think it's a good dialogue that we're going to. Continue. Sean, sorry, I didn't see you.
Yeah, I just wanted to actually comment in support of the idea of at least studying the type of rural hamlet, hamlet. That Kate has suggested because when we talk about forest connectivity, habitat contiguity. The only way we're actually going to achieve those goals or to, to maintain those features is to pull development closer to the roads. So how, what's the mechanism for accomplishing that? There are at least several proposals, if I remember correctly, I'm not sure how far along they are. For standard subdivisions off of Pond Road and those, those are fragmenting or will fragment those areas. In the way that we're suggesting the town plan should address. So I very much agree that while the five acres zoning does have certain benefits. It's failing in other ways because it's not keeping the, the development from those areas that we're trying to protect.
Right.
I agree.
Can I add something to? Several years ago, we had suggested that clustering be more. Several years ago, we had suggested that clustering be more, more required. And we had also made some suggestions about how you conserve the land that isn't developed in a development. And right now, much of it also often goes to a community decision-making process as opposed to actually conserving that property. So it makes it among the lowest of the low, lowly conserved lands. And if there were a way we could address how to protect the land that is, that's left out of the development area, the land that's not clustered, in a way that will make it permanent as opposed to perhaps subject to changing zoning five years from now or fifteen years from now. We may do more to be able to protect those lands in the first place. And I think really encouraging clustering and encouraging the idea that there should be open land or parkland or some kind of land, and then selecting the qualities of the land that should be preserved can help to do that without naming a particular property, which is very threatening to people.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, well, and things like shared driveways and all of those kinds of things.
Yeah.
A lot of that is what the PUD is designed to do. I can remember when they, when they started, initiated the PUDs out there, I don't think I was even on a boarding, I was just sitting and watching. But the whole idea of it for them was to be able to cluster homes, and they were thinking of Meadows, Long 116, to be able to cluster those homes close to the road, much as you're saying, much as Sean is saying. You reduce road coverage, you reduce pavement, services can be condensed. And that, that was the whole idea of putting PUDs out there.
It hasn't really worked very well, right?
It hasn't, because I don't think any, there haven't been that many small lots out there. I don't know, I can only think of one, that one on Bond Road. And I don't know if that's really a traditional PUD, is it?
The single-family house can do an awful lot of damage.
Yeah.
Some of the requirements that were in effect fifteen years ago were, were loosened ten years ago, eight years ago. The amount of open space required was down, was reduced.
So, any other highlights, Kate, that you want to touch on before we?
No, let's see, Dean, I'm just trying to remember what I scooted down just a little bit.
Can I ask one question on the rural hamlet idea? Like, I'm just thinking of the where appropriate, right? So, I love the idea in theory, but in practice, you then say, okay, you guys have already built out here, so if other people build, they're going to build real close to you, and they're like, but I built out here because I wanted to get away from everybody? You know, so what's going to be the reaction? People saying, I like my long driveway that gets me away from everybody else, and now I have to share a driveway and, you know?
Yeah, no, well, it, this would not be necessarily retroactive, you know? So it, this would be applying more to future development.
But if you're talking about there areas that are already impacted, and you want to say, let's keep impacting them rather than impacting other places, you're effectively.
The two places that I, I referenced have, historically, there has been some interest raised to the Planning Commission about maybe increasing density there, so I'm not, I don't think I was speaking out of school on that.
Okay.
But, and they, and then one of them also has this, this problem that they have separately raised with us about the, the septic issue. So, it just seemed like, I'm just looking for ways to turn lemons into lemonade, basically, you know?
No, I mean, like I said, theoretically, I love the idea, but I'm just thinking, all right, it's this idea of four people sitting in a room behind a desk, coming up with ideas that you're then imposing on their land that they've chosen to develop in a particular way, like, just trying to be sensitive to the fact that there are some people are going to say, you don't like the way I did it, but.
Yeah, no, of course, and that, that's, and we saw that with the form-based codes, that's, that's not a new.
Yeah.
Exercise, I think we're going to see, there are certain updates here that are going to generate a lot of.
Absolutely.
Input and conversation, and that's the point.
Yeah, I mean, will it?
But I think, I think, you know, if we, it, it, you know, it's, you know, build in the right place in the right way, right? That's kind of the central topic. And then we have this development pressure, and our rural area is not going to stay the way we want it. We would all love to freeze it in time right now if we don't take proactive steps now. So it's just really, you know, having, trying to have a conversation about, well, well, how do we do this? And, you know, some, obviously, some proposals are not going to be popular, and others will, will maybe win some favor, and, and I don't know what those are, I'm just sort of, I'm kind of throwing stuff up against the wall and seeing what sticks at this point. And you raise a very good point, I mean, we certainly don't want to speak for anybody's, you know, development rights or, or what have you. But, but we do have to make some tough decisions and, and I think start to have some conversations with people about how we, you know, do we all agree on the same ends? Maybe that's a, a starting point, and then if so, then how, how do we get there?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like we do, and.
Because we kind of can't eat our cake and have it too.
You got two interesting solutions, and I guess my other question then is, is it an either-or, is it an and? You know, that, I, I mean, we have. You have a PUD requirement for anything overdue, and we want to emphasize this idea of rural hamlet so that impacted areas continue to be impacted and you're preserving places that aren't impacted.
We also have this idea of rural districts are a big place, it may not be one-size-fits-all, right? Which some of us feel.
Yeah.
Seven-person commission, I'm guessing everybody doesn't share that view, so I, I think those are the kind of big-picture topics that we should just continue to try to get some alignment on as we push through some more tactical.
Rural district, there's some parts of it, I'm like, is that really, you know, like, yeah, I agree that it's, it's a broad brush painted over in red that could use some finer detail.
Right, and, you know, like, we, we went, in the form-based zoning area, you know, we, we used the strategy of character districts, and that might be a way to, to do something like that in the rural district. I don't know if it would be called a character district or, or whatever, but, you know, maybe especially, there's some areas that are environmentally more precious and pristine, and, and not just, and scenically too. So maybe those get some kind of, you know, and the open space plan helps provide some initial guidance on that. So this is not, you know, coming out of, you know, my fantasy or something, you know?
Nope, and these are all concepts that we recently discussed at our joint meeting with our friends on the Natural Resources Committee, so there, we'll continue to, to have those conversations, I think, while you're here too. I think it's probably a good time, I know on the agenda, we had talked about, when do we want to reconvene as a joint group? And we were thinking twice a year felt appropriate. I don't know if that takes us to September, October timeframe, but wanted to put it out for you to just think about, you know, what works well for your schedule, and the sooner that we can start scheduling that on our end, the better, I think, just so we have in everybody's minds, if we designate, whatever, first meeting in October, or at least look at that week and see how it.
But that makes, that makes sense to me, just because I know how long it took us to find a date that was appropriate.
Yeah, that way we can almost clear schedules and.
We can almost set up a yearly schedule for when we'll do that, and then we can try to be present at as many meetings as we're going to be discussing these topics in any case.
Okay, good, so we'll, should we look at early October as?
Sounds.
As a target date for us to reconvene?
As good as any.
Okay, good, we'll do that. So it's twenty after nine, why don't we wrap up the rural district for now? We'll, we'll revisit this at the next meeting. Last subitem here was to just give a quick preview of, of what's to come. I know the energy section is one that.
Energy is, the people at the Regional Planning Commission are just looking to schedule that discussion. I think it will take a good, decent chunk of your meeting.
So, I'm trying to think, we, we definitely need more time on rural. I almost feel like we need one more pass on growth area two, as it's been revised, just so people have it in the packets. I don't think we need a lot of meeting time on it, but to the extent other commissioners have input.
Parks and Rec's pretty short and sweet, if you want to knock that off.
We can do that, I mean, we can also.
Energy and Parks and Rec?
Energy, Parks and Rec, but I, I just want to make sure we.
Oh, and childcare, because.
I honestly think we could probably knock off Parks and Rec right now, like, before we go. It's two pages.
Okay.
And there's like, just a couple very small tweaks to it.
So, so if we, to the extent that we may be able to pull you back into a meeting, if we were to put the rural conversation back on for late July, is that workable, or would you rather August?
Discussing the meeting schedule of the commission in August was another.
Yeah, we'll talk about that, but let's assume it's one, it'll be the first meeting in August.
I would guess that we could probably find, there'll just be three of us who could show up at any given meeting.
Okay.
Maybe not all of us, but.
So let's see. I almost feel like we should wrap up growth area two, right? Can we just confirm that? Include that in the packet, the revised version of growth area two? If Melanie is itching to come in, I'm willing to open up the energy discussion and then just push rural to the first meeting in August or the only meeting in August if we decide that? Uh, so, for August, it would be, thirty-first is a Monday, from what I remember.
Twenty-ninth is a Tuesday.
The eleventh?
The tenth is a Tuesday.
Oh, it's the tenth?
Tenth, and.
That's what it would be.
Twenty-fourth.
It would be the tenth of August, where we would pick up the rural district? Okay, that's fine, so let's do.
No, but I won't be here.
You won't be here for August, okay. So.
Dick, can you do it? Can you spearhead the rural? Can you be here on the tenth and do that? Okay, because, yeah, I have a.
Okay, so, energy for the next meeting?
Who's that?
That is Jason.
Yeah, he and I have chatted a little bit about it.
Do you guys want to do Parks and Rec now, or no?
No.
All right.
Yeah, I, I, no, 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 that's Dick.
Dick's our senior member, so he, he pulls rank here.
Every minute we're here, it's costing me more babysitter money, so I'm fine with that.
Oh, boy, well, I don't want to be that, you should have told me that, yeah. Parks and Rec, we'll, we'll cover very quickly, let's make sure we do that at the beginning of the next meeting before we even jump into the energy section, since I know energy will, will be lengthy. Beyond that, we'll target August tenth for picking up the rural, and then TBD, what else we may cover on the tenth. Sound good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, next item is a quick check-in on the form-based zoning outreach to our stakeholder group that has been pre-selected. It's a, it's a group that, we've done just some brainstorming and pulled a few names together, I think, as Brandy notes in the memo or whoever is leading this, I don't know if it's Paul. It's an open session, but we've, you know, tried to proactively reach out to people who we think would provide insightful comment and input on the current two-point-oh draft. I don't have much to add on this, other than the timing, the proposed timing is the week of the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth.
That's what she was shooting for.
Is what she was shooting for, so that's the week of our meeting, right?
It would be.
That's the week, we meet on Thursday, so is it thinking this is during the day?
Her plan was to do it during the day, or five o'clock, I think, is what her intention was.
Five o'clock, okay.
On that Friday, the twenty-fifth?
Um.
She was looking at Monday.
Tuesday, July twenty-fifth.
Oh, July, sorry.
I think the possibility existed that if it didn't work out, too many people set that date, just didn't.
Yeah, it's just bracketed for now, which is fine. I thought the memo was fine, I, I don't really have any objections, I, my fingers are crossed on hoping we actually get some people in a room who are willing to commit the time, as well as the pre-read is not easy to get through. So I know some of these people are somewhat familiar with it, some probably haven't looked at it since the initial one-point-oh development. And then there are a lot of people here who I'm guessing have never even seen it, so.
Yeah, she did have reason, though, after talking with Paul, to think that they would, they would be game.
Okay, well, fingers crossed, I will plan to be there as well. Hopefully, others can try to find the time, if possible, if not, not, not critical. You know, the idea here is definitely trying to get input from the developers and, and professionals in that space.
Is five PM the most likely time it would happen?
Is that what she was thinking?
I heard two, five, five PM was the most likely.
She, she had mentioned a different time earlier in conversation.
I thought someone had said during the day.
And, and then it came out to be five, and I didn't, I don't think I went back to her to say, well, how did that come about? I think that at one point, there was this idea of people being able to come together at noon. I don't know if she was thinking of, you know, feeding people or, or that, but.
My only suggestion on, I like how they, I like this idea of, here's an example of the way you should think about it, where they gave the section references, and in the section above that, where it says a session will be structured around, I thought we should add, at least to the extent we can, section references to, for example, the development review process, right? At least point them to, here are the sections that you should try to get eyes on. The other ones are more open-ended questions, you know, which are fine, in what ways does it limit redevelopment?
Now, at one point, I had had the impression she was thinking that the memo would come from her, the feedback I have, and this is, this is ambiguous, the way that it's drafted presently, but she seems to think that it really needs to come from the town slash planning commissions, that's why it was done in this format. So, I'm just giving people that information, in case you were thinking it was like we discussed before.
And would that come from you?
I think, well, I'll.
On behalf of the Planning Commission?
It'll come from the office, I, I don't know that my name will resonate, but I think that if I put your name on it as the chair of the Planning Commission.
I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, I'm good with that, everybody comfortable with that? Check in, and then from there, I assume we have one final meeting with Brandy, is that accurate?
There is one additional meeting on the work program, we haven't, at one point, we had talked about setting a time to talk about it, but I think it, all the attention shifted to this session.
This session.
And I haven't heard her say anything more about that, and whether or not it would be with this group again or with something with the, the select board.
Oh, so we have one meeting, whether it's with us.
No, 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 I think, I think that she is adding into the scope the session with the, the development community. In addition to that, there's one more public meeting.
Okay.
And I think that as it was originally envisioned, it might have been with a select board.
Yeah.
And I think that could be how you do it, or it could be that you do something different.
I think we should put it in front of them, yeah.
As far as the date, though, I think it's a little early to tell.
And is it on Joe's radar?
Sorry?
Is it on Joe's agenda?
I'm not sure.
Scripting, yeah.
Probably, it hasn't stuck.
The only thing I'd say about this memo too, is it just invites that person to, it might be worth putting a note that, you know, we so hope that you are an appropriate member of your staff, you know, something like that, like, if we invite, I'm just thinking, John Pizza Galley's not there anymore, but, you know, whatever, one of these developers. One of these developers couldn't come, but they have someone who's kind of their code, you know, like, they could send someone.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion.
Might be better.
Or your, yeah, or a delegate, or.
Yeah.
Designate.
Yeah, designate, right? However we want to phrase that, like.
Because sometimes these guys, they're just not going to, some people might not be as down in the weeds.
Definitely. They may not be around, but they may have somebody who's there that week and is available to come in and.
It may seem kind of like a reach to put Ernie Palmero's name on there, but he came to the interviews before they showed up, so.
Senior?
Sorry?
Senior?
Ernie?
No.
Not, not.
No, yeah, Ernie.
It was Ernie, not Tony.
All right, so let's do that. We'll revise that, get it back to Paul, and they, we can send it out, however we want to do that. We can undermine him or.
Question for you on the.
Shoot.
Form-based code. I had a couple of suggestions I wanted to throw. I don't know if this is time and place, but in the stormwater section, on your, it's 2205.4B Stormwater Management, Section 2, applicability, Part A.
Don, you used in the red line, and could you just repeat that again, so I can just bring it up on the screen?
Okay. It's 2205.4B Stormwater Management. It's a fair way into the document.
This is going to take me forever. Yeah, this is.
2205, okay, keep going. Don, and you have a suggested change to that section, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Under applicability, A, these regulations shall apply to, and this is a typo maybe, all slash any. That needs to be corrected, which one, to all or to any land development within the SR, FOB, D, where I would suggest instead of one half acre, drop that to one quarter as a way to get better regulation of stormwater. This district highly developed to get many smaller lots, and this gives you more ability to control stormwater, if you drop that to one quarter. And then Paragraph B, if the combination of new and previous area created in the redevelopment or substantial reconstruction of existing previous services is less than 5,000 square feet, if you could drop that to 3,000 square feet. I think that's a standard that Heinzberg is employing. And I think Vermont cities and towns is even suggesting 2,500 square feet. So those would give us a tighter requirement to enforce better stormwater control.
Yeah.
And then in the Section 3 Stormwater Best Practices, toward the very back, it's Paragraph B, post-construction peak runoff rate for the one-year 24-hour. I think that's, language is coming from, like, the state stormwater manual, where that's the standard that they apparently did not tighten up. Like to suggest that you do tighten that up, or give us the ability to tighten it up, and say either a two-year or five-year, where the one-year is 2.1 inches in 24 hours. A two-year number, I think, is 2.26 inches. So that's like a 7% increase of water that the developers would have to account for. A five-year would jump up to like 2.82, is the number I researched, which would be more like a third again of what they have to account for.
That, where was that, 2.1 inch?
We just saw it for a second.
Yeah.
It's, it's in the, me and Section 3 Stormwater Best Practices.
Yeah.
Oops.
And then toward the back of that.
That's right there in B.
Paragraph B.
Yeah.
Okay. And you're saying 2.1 is not a current?
No, it is the current, but there was going to be.
When the state redid the manual, they're still thinking, they're dealing with a rural, generally rural state. But this particular zone you're dealing with here is not rural. And so the more, more strength you can give our town to control stormwater and tightening up how much water they need to manage is going to help us.
Yeah.
And if you do that piece by piece by piece, as that's redeveloping, it's going to save the town from having to come in with these.
Right.
Massive.
Fixes.
Fixes later on.
But I'm sorry, Don.
If you get some regulation like this.
But you're suggesting changing the one-year storm to a six-month storm?
No, from a one-year to a two- or five-year storm standard. So the one-year 24-hour is 2.1, somewhere in the 1.9 to 2.1 inches of rain. A two-year standard would be 2.26 inches of rain. So it's allowing, it's requiring them to account for more water, where, this section, if I'm reading correctly, water they can't infiltrate and have to store, they need to account for more water by going to a two-year or even a five-year, if you would go that high. Tightens up the stormwater requirement.
But doesn't that, maybe I'm reading this the wrong way, but doesn't that, this suggests that they have to do, that this, the threshold is, is whenever there's a one-year, which would be, happen more frequently than a five-year, or something like that. So it sounds like you're, what you're saying would be that.
Relax it.
Yeah, this to me sounds tight, this to me sounds tighter. You know, part of it is they, these, the nomenclature is hard to understand. But I think this is tighter, but that would be a great question to ask Amy, because she's actually, you know, her firm is writing the state's manual. So she's, she's about as close to the, you know, current state policy as we can get. But that would be a great question to raise with her, hopefully, is she, will she be, that's probably not the goal of the next meeting.
She might be at the select board meeting.
The select board meeting, yeah, to explain that. Because I think, you know, we're sort of, one of the things that's been a revelation, at least to me, through this process of version 2.0, is, you know, let's just have stormwater be the whole controlling principle of everything, you know? Because that will guide how it needs to be managed and where development can take place. Because like, one of the things we discovered was that the best places for infiltration are actually the parts of the corridor closer to South Burlington. So that led to this very interesting discussion of, well, gosh, maybe we should have, allow taller buildings on smaller footprints there, so that we can make use of this asset of the higher infiltration ability. So, you know, it's been very interesting what we've learned.
All right.
Yeah, I'm reading this section properly. The section, the applicability tells you, it says, you're going to deal with a certain size and greater with exclusions. And so if you, if you drop that certain size from the half acre down to the quarter acre, but then you're excluding 5,000 feet or less, but you drop that down to 3,000 feet, then you're getting a bigger.
That is different, I agree, and those.
So then, that says, for these properties that you have to address, here's what you have to do to try to deal with water. Then it says, if you cannot process that water, then you go to the next paragraph, and they have to store it, or do some other, if they can't do it using the required processes, then they have to do something else. And they only have to do that for a one-year, two inches of rainfall.
And it's one year and above, because a two-year storm is going to be greater than a one-year storm volume. So by dropping the period of time, you're going to pick up more storms. And so what it is, is it's a trigger for when it kicks in. There are more storms at the lower rainfall frequencies. So by dropping that from one year to six months, you are picking up more storms. By putting it from one year to two years, or one year to five years, you're saying there are fewer storms that it must address.
I'm thinking of this like the quinny ask, where they say they're doing us a favor by jumping up to the 100-year storm standard, therefore the ponds will be even larger to store more water.
Right, but that's, that goes to the sizing the capacity of the stormwater detention. This is not saying that.
This is frequency versus volume. That's the difference.
It's a different, it's a different set of issues, Don.
Okay, well then, we need to find out, drop it down to a half-year standard, or raise it to a five-year.
So we'll take the comments under consideration. There was, as you can imagine, a lot of deliberation and conversation about the half-acre trigger, as well as the 5,000-foot trigger, so, but your points are well noted. So as we get into our final review, we'll definitely make note of those. Thanks for the comments. Okay. So our next item here is Commissioner Questions and Comments. I don't know if anybody had anything. I wanted to just, we have a vacancy on the commission, so to the extent anybody wants to, Don has.
Oh, Don, oh, right, okay.
So we haven't been able to fill his spot yet. So we'll, we'll be advertising, and if anybody knows anyone, please do some outreach.
Who was the, we had a candidate who threw his hat in the ring when I, Perry and I came on, who was not selected.
Yeah, and did not happen on Tuesday. So he went in front of the select board on Tuesday and was not appointed, so.
Okay. Got it.
Back to candidate outreach.
Was he the only candidate who came forward?
Was, yeah. The last piece, I just wanted to let everybody know, because I don't think everybody got this email, but the Ethics Committee has revised its rules of procedure. There'll be a public hearing on August 14th. To the extent anyone's interested, it's on the town website. I'm happy to forward it to, but they've, they're looking for input. There will be a public hearing, so just thought it would be of interest to the group. That's all I had on questions and comments. Any other business, moving on to our last agenda item?
I just wanted to check what I had written, if there was something in the memo that.
So I wanted to just poll the group. For August, traditionally, we only meet once. And I, I'm going to assume that we want to continue that tradition?
Sounds like a good tradition.
I think Dick will. Yeah. Everybody good with just one meeting? I know you won't be here, so it's okay.
I'm sorry, I won't be here.
We'll just.
So we would do the 10th, not the 24th?
We do the 10th, not the 24th. Yeah. So we'll plan on that, Dean.
Okay.
The last piece is the.
Could you do the 24th and not the 10th, so Kate could be here? I mean, does it matter which one you do and which one you?
Uh, it doesn't, and we can decide that at the next meeting, if we want to.
Yeah. I have a giant deadline for work on the 25th, on the, well, no, it's on the 29th. I could do the 24th, I could do the 24th. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Just throwing that out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Does it, do people care which one it is?
I don't think anybody does, so why don't we just get a sense from the rest of the group at the next meeting, and then we can.
Although I could be gone now that I think of that.
We'll figure out August, but we're aligned on one meeting.
Yeah.
We will, absolutely, yeah, we'll circle back, don't worry. I will, I won't forget. The last item is included in the packet, was the latest and greatest Housing in Shelburne version, which from our esteemed Housing Subcommittee, Ron Bouchard, has asked for any final input.
Final for this version?
For this version, yeah. I think they will continue to fine-tune it. But they've, they've reflected some, you know, we took a pass at this months ago and have reflected a lot of that input. They've reorganized things, and generally, it's looking pretty solid. Thank them for all their volunteer work here. There's, there's also a vacancy on this committee, so if anybody has people who are interested in housing in particular, let me know, and, because we do have to make an appointment.
We make that.
We, yes, will make that. Beyond that, I don't, my only thought here was, I, it may be overreaching, but I was wondering if Ann Hogan might be interested in looking at this latest and greatest housing booklet? And I'm happy to ask her, I know Ron would be happy to ask her as well, but I thought, you know, having her just take a pass as.
Yeah.
As her editor in chief skills, it might not be a bad idea. It's not a lot of content, and she's, she has a strong interest in this topic generally, so I think she would be.
This is Ann who was on the committee.
Yeah. If there are no objections, I'll just.
Maybe she would be interested in the.
Reach out to her. I think she wants to stay involved, so I thought this was one where she might just be interested in taking a look at it. Yeah, exactly. I didn't want to go that far, but I, I might, so. I'll see if she's ready to jump back in, it's.
She leaves a big hole.
Uh, she does. So with that, we'll assume there's no other business. Okay. Take a motion to adjourn.
I will just also mention, the select board did adopt the zoning changes for the childcare, and that'll take effect in about 18 days, 19 days.
Great. Great. Motion to adjourn? By Andrew, seconded by Dick, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.